Call a meeting in order, please. Supervisor Collins, would you lead us in invocation?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, in these difficult times as once again our country is attacked by extremists, the loss of life and the significant series of injuries, please take all those who are injured and who died in your heart and in your arms and show them mercy and give the families strength and those who are injured and lost limbs the strength to carry on and to move forward. And give us, the leaders of this country, the strength, the ability, and the knowledge in order to overcome once again the loss and the tragedy which we have to deal with almost regularly now. In your name we pray. Amen.
Vice Chairman Ewing, would you lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
Please stand, peace flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are no additions.
Our motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor De Haven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ewing, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tab, Tab D, which is the board's summer and fall schedule.
Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Fisher, is there a second by Supervisor Ewing? Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Citizen comments, Mr. Rowley, did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir. We have four citizens, Mr. Chairman. The first is Jay Martz.
Would you come forward, please? Give your name, magisterial district, and leave your comments for three minutes, please.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I'm Jay Martz. I'm in the Gainesboro district. Chairman Schickel, members of the board, Administrator Riley. I've looked at the resolution for the new county administration building. The unsolicited proposal appears to provide for financing, land, design, construction of the new building, and a purchase of the existing building. It appears to be an interesting and serious proposal. However, I did a quick review of the recently approved capital improvement plan and saw no mention of a need for a new facility. I suppose that is why the proposal is unsolicited. I think it's probably worthwhile to give it consideration and gain an understanding of the projected costs, the debt we may incur, and the timelines for completion. However, it should fit in the proper priority with the overall county requirements. And also, I hope you will honor your commitment to the county debt management policy goals laid out in your plan by maintaining our high bond rating and keeping the level of indebtedness that can be managed with available resources and no new taxes. I believe we have a bonded debt in the amount of about 140 million, from what I gather, and this equates to principal and interest payments of about 17.2 million dollars a year. My main concern has been growing school construction debt, and now we have another project. I've previously expressed my skepticism on some of our construction projects, such as the 17 million dollar transportation facility and the apparent lack of planning on the disposal of the old transportation facility on Indian Hollow Road. Do we need two transportation facilities? We had similar difficulty with the property management of the old Gainesboro School, if you remember. Decently concluded. The proposal under discussion seems to take this into consideration as the purchase of the existing building is included. I would ask you to go back to the capital improvements plan and reevaluate our stated priorities and also consider other projects. I think a natural fit into this proposal would be the Frederick County Public School Board Administration Building. It's listed in the capital improvements plan. I believe it's priority number seven, but I think it would lead to the elimination of duplicate requirements, separate property, construction costs, sharing of meeting space, conference rooms, IT systems, all saving the taxpayer money in the long run. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board and enjoy the blue.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have Larry Bradshaw with the village at Orchard Ridge.
Good evening. My name is Larry Bradshaw, and I represent the village of Orchard Ridge in the Gainesboro district in Frederick County. Later this evening, the board will take up for consideration a recommendation from the finance committee to deny the village Orchard Ridge's request for the adoption of a partial exemption from real estate taxes on the community's property. The village is exempt from both federal and state income taxes pursuant to a determination letter from the IRS dated June 24, 2010. In lieu of the real estate taxes, the village is proposing a payment of, in lieu of these taxes, of one-tenth of one percent of the appraised value, or approximately $42,000 in 2013. This amount would change as future phases of the project are constructed, and the appraised value would also change. The village, as a tax-exempt organization, provides significant financial and social benefits to the Frederick County community. The village will provide approximately 100 jobs each year, and during construction, there were over 1,200 hard hat stickers issued and workers from 98 different contractors on the project. Additionally, the village is currently negotiating with local farmers to build a local sustainable agriculture program, which will provide most of the food utilized by the village along with other collaborative efforts with county service providers. The village will have a vibrant volunteer program, which will provide opportunities for the Frederick County community at large to participate at the campus. There will be approximately 300 residents living on this campus when our Phase One is full. Of the current residents of record, only 23% currently reside in Frederick County. In addition to the jobs depicted that I've already mentioned, that means there may be as many as 220 to 230 new residents in Frederick County that are currently living elsewhere. These individuals be a vibrant part of the community, contributing funds for shopping, visitors, et cetera, to the county and city revenue levels. In a memo dated April 8, 2013, from the Frederick County Director of Planning and Development, the director acknowledges that the village will have no impact on the schools, county schools, general government, or public safety requirements. In addition, in 2014, the village will be providing $1 million toward the construction of a new fire station in the Round Hill area. The county has established precedent for providing this kind of payment in lieu of taxes program. In November 1985, the county entered into a similar agreement with Westminster Canaveral Shenandoah Valley, a not-for-profit senior living community. Westminster Canaveral and the village Orchard Ridge have many similarities. Both are not-for-profit, faith-based organizations, and both are considered continuing care retirement communities, subject to the oversight of the Virginia Bureau of Insurance. The village Orchard Ridge requests that the board of supervisors reject the recommended action by the finance committee and consider the proposed payment in lieu of tax based upon the facts that we have presented and the significant variance in equitable treatment between Westminster Canaveral Shenandoah Valley and the village Orchard Ridge. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. George Criss, Gainesboro district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board of supervisors. My name is George Criss, a resident of the Gainesboro district and soon to be a resident of the village at Orchard Ridge. My comments will address the numeric value of the parks and recreation portion of the development impact model that was used for the village at Orchard Ridge. The amount of 1,782 would seem to be extremely high for a continuing care community retirement that has its own walking trail, has a fitness center, and has a relationship with the Valley Health Wellness Center. In the not-too-distant future, I hope to see a swimming pool built. I doubt very seriously that many, if any at all, of the village at Orchard Ridge residents will ever use the parks and recreation facilities of Frederick County. Therefore, I request that the proposed action of the finance committee be rejected or at least postponed until a much more reasonable development impact model be developed for a continuous continuing care retirement community. In addition, I know that there is a group of residents that have already been in contact with the Frederick County School Superintendent to volunteer in the reading program of two elementary schools to assist students in their reading capabilities. This is just one of the many ways in which the residents of the village of Orchard Ridge will be productive citizens of Frederick County. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last speaker is Bob Bartley, Gainesboro district.
Good evening, Chairman Schickel and members of the board. My name is Bob Bartley. Many of you may know me since I have spent most of my adult life here and been active in business and also community service work. It is also my good fortune to know most of you gentlemen and the fine work you do here. Recently, my wife and I have moved into the villages at Orchard Ridge, and consequently, we are residents of the Gainesboro district. We have been very happy there. We've found the beautiful residence to be everything we expected. The people are very professional, very helpful, and they have a wonderful staff. I personally feel that Winchester is extremely fortunate to have this beautiful facility come here to locate. They have brought already hundreds of people to our community, and in the coming years, they will bring thousands and thousands of more new residents here to this community. And they will all be spending money in our stores and our shopping centers, with our doctors, hospitals. They'll be paying taxes on their automobiles. So there will be a tremendous infusion of new revenue coming in here to this county. I think we should be very happy with that. You have already heard ample documentation about the history of the National Lutheran Communities and Services. They are a 501(c)(3) charitable organization with an outstanding record of service to our seniors. They come here eager to continue to the noble work they have so professionally advanced in other locations. They seek only an opportunity to compete on a level field. They seek no special privileges, only those privileges that have already been afforded to their competition. I hope that each of you feel as I do, that they deserve and should be entitled to the same rights and benefits that others have been afforded in businesses similar to theirs, not only in Winchester but throughout the state. At the December... gentlemen, in closing, I would just ask you to try to be the good neighbors that you are to the good neighbors that have come here. And let history record that this board here tonight had the wisdom and the vision to assist this organization to become as great as it can be, because for many, many years, it's going to be a very valuable asset to all of us. I thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Last speaker, Mr. Rowley. Board of Supervisors, comments, are there any? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes. Budget work session, April 3, 2013.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval, is submitted.
Motion by Supervisor De Haven to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Budget work session minutes of April 3, 2013 are approved. Next is the regular meeting, April 9, 2013.
We're well submitted, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, April 9, 2013 are approved. Next is a special presentation of the Employee of the Month Award. The Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes the county's employees as an important and valuable resource. If I could have Beverly H. Rosado come forward, please, and stand with us. On behalf of the board of supervisors, it is my pleasure to present Beverly H. Rosado for consideration as Employee of the Month for April 2013. Beverly serves the Commissioner of Revenue Business Division and is being awarded for her loyalty and commitment to her position as Chief Administrator. In addition to welcoming and educating new county businesses, Beverly goes beyond the specific duties of her office by explaining where to obtain ownership structuring information, providing other business resources, and have a staff notary public available. One of Beverly's most notable accomplishments includes the forefront of the implementation of a website with availability of 24-hour, seven-days-a-week access to current 31 printable business-related forms and instruction sheets, as well as 19 user-friendly business online programs. As a result, county expenses for issuing required forms have been substantially reduced. She has also encouraged taxpayers to go green, which has resulted in tremendous success for the 2013 season, where 72.7% of business renewals were completed online. Beverly is to be commended for her initiative and dedication. We'll now entertain a motion to approve Beverly H. Rosada as Employee of the Month for April 2013.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Lofton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Beverly H. Rosada is hereby recognized as Frederick County Employee of the Month for April 2013. The board of supervisors extends its gratitude to Beverly for her outstanding performance, dedicated service, and wishes her continued success in future endeavors. Committee appointments. Historic Greece Irish's Advisory Board, I don't believe we have a candidate, do we yet, Mr. Rowley?
No, sir.
All right. I don't believe we have a Russell 150 Community Development Authority candidate.
No, sir.
Planning Commission, Back Creek, are we ready?
No, sir. I have confirmed that Mr. Croson does not wish to be reappointed. I have talked to a couple of people, have a couple of more that I'll be in contact with to talk with, but I will have someone next month.
All right. Peckham Planning District.
Not at this point, Mr. Chairman. I'll be in contact with Mr. Thomas.
Lord Fairfax Emergency Medical Services Council, Mr. Price, I believe, is eligible to serve again, and is willing, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And the Fire and Rescue Association last week recommended that he be reappointed if it's the pleasure of the board.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be very proud to nominate Tommy Price to be reappointed.
We have a motion by Supervisor De Haven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Tommy Price is reappointed to Lord Fairfax Emergency Medical Services Council. Social Services Board, Gainesboro, are we ready?
No, sir.
Winchester Regional Airport Authority, Frederick County representative, did you have a chance to speak with him?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Reichert is willing to serve again, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. David C. Reichert is reappointed to the Winchester Regional Airport Authority. Development Impact Model Committee, we have a number of people listed. I believe all of them are willing to re-serve, is that correct, Mr. Rowley?
I believe so.
What is the pleasure of the board? The current members are Chris Tierney, Gary Lofton, Robert Hess, H. Paige Ranial, Roger L. Thomas, Dr. John Lamanna, Brian Madigan, and Stephen Pettler and J. P. Carr. I don't believe I missed one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of the committee, as stated.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The individuals I read are reappointed to the Development Impact Committee. Next is a resolution to accept for consideration unsolicited proposal under the Public Private Educational Facilities Infrastructure Act of 2002 and to invite competing proposals. Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county has received an unsolicited proposal reference the construction of approximately a 150,000-square-foot in size office, county office building, to be located in Frederick County. And it would be appropriate, if the board sees fit, to accept for consideration the unsolicited proposal, which in turn will generate the county seeking of solicited proposals for similar criteria.
Any questions for Mr. Rowley?
Mr. Chairman, is it...
Mr. Hess.
I'm not sure whether it's the appropriate time to look at the wording of the solicitation of competing proposals. Would that be now? If Mr. Hess is so inclined, yes, sir. On page... let me get to it, just a moment. Page six of the solicitation, valuation of criteria for evaluating proposals. The opening sentence says, "The following are the evaluation criteria that the county will be using to evaluate proposals in their descending order of priority." I would like to suggest that we remove the final phrase there, "in their descending order of priority." I certainly would have some questions as to why items like public interest and public input would be at the very end of the list, and especially when we have no waiting for the various categories. And I would suggest we just delete that and that all of these items, all of these criteria are important, and I'm a little reluctant to place an order of importance on it.
Do you have other items?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Rowley, is this lifted from something that exists now?
Primarily, it's recommended verbiage, but not necessarily mandated. And I believe Mr. Hess raises an excellent point as far as a priority.
So if the, I assume will be a motion, is adopted, would it change where this is lifted from or just applied to this project? Or is it our discretion?
Your discretion, but I would answer it as this project.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the concern? Is that in form of motion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we delete on page six of the solicitation the phrase "in their descending order of priority."
Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote on this amendment. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Now, the question is back before us on the resolution itself.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other questions, I'd be willing to make a motion at this point.
Are there any other questions? All right, go ahead.
I'd make a motion at the resolution to accept for consideration an unsolicited proposal under the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002 and to invite competing proposals be approved.
All right, we have a motion.
Accepted, I'm sorry.
To adopt the resolution, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Any discussion? I think I'll take a voice vote, please. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing? Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,953.90. This amount represents travel reimbursement. No local funds are required. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor De Haven, any discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The sheriff requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $703,359.56. This amount represents funds needed for technology projects. Committee authorized vendor negotiations to begin for Phase Three of the mobile project. Committee also recommends approval of $95,400 for the dual anticipation and the virtual server project. The remaining projects will be considered at a later date, as the committee had recommended approval, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve the $95,400, and I guess the vendor negotiations?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, any discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The finance director requests a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $518,088.76. This amount represents prior year tax refunds that were refunded in 2012. Committee recommends approval, and I so move.
A motion to approve, is there a second? Second, Mr. Chairman. Second by Supervisor Fisher, discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion passes.
The county administrator provided requested information for discussion on tax exemptions for the village of Orchard Ridge. The committee recommends denial of the P.I.L.T. request. Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict there, and I need to abstain at this point.
All right, the question is before you. Is there a motion? Supervisor De Haven.
Mr. Chairman, as pleased as I am to have them in our community and look forward to their continued health here, I can't support the exemptions.
Is that a motion?
I would move that we deny the request.
All right, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if their request is denied, then the recommendation of the committee is approved. Can I assume that that would not preclude a further offer, if you would, being placed on the table at some future date?
Mr. Rowley, an opinion?
That is a possibility. I mean, the prerogative is with this governing body is to grant the status. So if the community should choose to come forward at another time with a different solution, it would be my understanding that I think the board would certainly sit down and consider it.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
I've heard some comments about leveling the playing field, and I do agree with that, but I would level the playing field in a different way, and that is look at the tax exemptions we've given others whose situation, whose model may have changed and not changed what we're doing here tonight. I think that we need to revisit what we have done in the past to see if it still germines what we should be doing in future.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Collins.
This issue came... I've been keeping track of the emails and the letters and trying to educate myself as well as I can on this. And although I understand the purpose of all of this, there's still some, I guess because I wasn't around for some of the actions that took place, I still have several questions that I don't feel comfortable voting one way or the other at this particular point in time. There's just some information that I would like to know some better answers to, and I just haven't had the time to sit down with the powers that be to have them explain to me some of the tax ramifications and other issues that occur in this. So that's my opinion. If the board wants to go forward, I'm not going to stand in its way.
Your alternative at this time would be to amend the motion for postponement.
I would make that motion.
All right, we have an amendment to the motion to postpone to vote to a win.
I think the next meeting, Mr. Chairman, it's... I think the question is, I just need a couple hours of some individual's time.
All right, there is a motion, is there a second, to postpone to the next meeting as an amendment? All right, hearing no second, their motion dies. We're back to the question. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Supervisor Hess, this is a motion to deny.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
I'll abstain.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes no, but the motion passes. The request is denied.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my finance report.
Let me want to get on the right page. All right, next is a public hearing and ordinance to amend Frederick County Code, Chapter 155 Taxation, Article 18. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to introduce the amendment and then ask Mr. Williams to speak to it if that is appropriate.
Go ahead.
This is an ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155 Taxation, Article 18, Special License Provisions, Section 155-98, Carnivals, Circuses and Trained Animal Shows, and 155-100, Itinerant and Distressed Merchant Vendors. The purpose of these amendments is generally to add trained animal shows as subject to the license tax in Section 155/98, to reduce the license tax from $500 to $100 per event for persons conducting for-profit festivals, and to reduce the license tax from $500 to $30 per event for persons selling goods at for-profit festivals, to exempt from the license tax nonprofit organizations conducting festivals, and to exempt from the license tax persons selling goods at festivals organized by nonprofit organizations. And I will defer to Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The current ordinance sections 155-98 and 155-100 impose a $500 license tax on vend, and what are in essence temporary vendors who are not otherwise licensed for business in Frederick County. So that would extend to someone who just comes into the county on a single occasion and sets up shop wherever, side of the road or in a premises, as well as vendors who attend organized events in the county, be they festivals, be they the Frederick County Fair. The way the ordinance is currently readied, they're subject to the $500 tax, again unless they otherwise already have a Frederick County business license. That's the provision that's allowed by the state code. It's not mandated by the state code. The county has the right to impose a lesser tax. What the ordinance revisions would do would be to exempt certain temporary business activity, not exempt, but reduce the burden for certain temporary business activities, namely the latter ones I mentioned, vendors at festivals, vendors at the Frederick County Fair, so that they would only pay either $30 for the event or actually the way the revision is written for vendors at the fair, because the fair itself is a nonprofit activity, those vendors would be exempt if they're otherwise not required to have a county business license. Because of the need to draw out well-tailored exemptions makes the language of this a little bit complicated, but that is the general concept of what is before the board, and I'll certainly entertain any questions.
Questions? I just, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I just want a clarification. When we talk about nonprofit organizations, are they to be designated by the IRS as a 501(c)(3) or some other designation that makes it a legitimate nonprofit organization?
It would be based on the IRS designation.
Thank you.
Other questions? It's more of a curiosity question. Was there any wording change to this since we last saw it or just good explanation? Either my comprehension level went up, it didn't seem as convoluted when I read it the second time, so I didn't know if it had gotten changed or if, if I just understood it better.
Mr. Chairman? Explain. I don't believe we made any, we certainly, if there was any changes, they were only very minor tweaks and they would not have been significant enough that you would have reached that opinion otherwise.
Other questions? If not, then we'll conduct a public hearing and ordinance to amend the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155 Taxation, Article 18, Special License Provisions, Sections 155-98, Carnivals, Circuses and Trained Animal Shows, and 155-100, Itinerant and Distressed Merchandise Vendors. The purpose of these amendments is generally to add trained animal shows as subject to the license tax in Section 155-98, to reduce the licensing tax from 500 to 100 per event for persons conducting for-profit festivals, and to reduce the license tax from $500 to $30 per event for persons selling goods at for-profit festivals, to exempt from the license tax nonprofit organizations conducting festivals, and to exempt from the license tax persons selling goods at festivals organized by nonprofit organizations. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance to amend? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments, three minutes, please.
J. March, Gainesboro District. As the chairman of the Northern Shenandoah Valley Tea Party, a nonprofit organization, if this ordinance allows me to sell T-shirts at a, an event and I don't have to pay a business license, I think this is a great thing because we're a proud organization, but we struggle a little bit with money. So anything that the county can do to allow nonprofit organizations to show up and sell a couple pieces of merchandise to help their, to help their organizations would be appreciated. We don't have any animal acts, but we do have some T-shirts to sell. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Well, it's a pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance as written.
We have a motion by Supervisor Collins to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing? Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the ordinance to amend is approved. Next is another public hearing, a proposed sale of an easement to the Old Woolen Mill LLC. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Parks and Recreation Commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors to approve the sewer easement request submitted by Painter and Lewis that would run from the old Clearbrook Woolen Shop property through a portion of Clearbrook Park and connect to the Frederick County Sanitation Authority system. The easement is approximately 700, 7,800 square feet in area and is located on tax map parcel 33A162B. The request was approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission and the requestor will compensate Frederick County $1,638, which is a 25%, 25% of the appraised value as per the Parks and Recreation Commission easement policy. The requestor has also offered to donate $25,000 for the construction of a maintenance storage facility at Clearbrook Park in addition to meeting the requirements of the easement policy. I believe Mr. Robertson is here, Director of Frederick County Parks and Recreation. Should you have any further questions?
Any questions of Mr. Riley or Mr. Roberts? All right, then we'll conduct a public hearing. This is a public hearing for the proposed sale of an easement to the Old Woolen Mill LLC or successors or assigns to accommodate a connection to the Frederick County Sanitation Authority system. For the benefit of the property, the Old Woolen Mill LLC or successors or assigns said easement constituting approximately 7,843 square feet and be, being located on a portion of the tax parcel number 33-A-162B. Said parcel, including portions that would not be subject to these and being a portion of the property used by and referred to by the Frederick County as Clearbrook Park in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this proposed sale of an easement? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. This is Stonewall.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of the request.
We have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Ewing. Any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Next, we have a Planning Commission public hearing, conditional use permit 02-13 for Fred Sabia.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow marriage and counseling office within the residence. Cottage occupations are allowed within the RP Residential Performance zoning district with an approved conditional use permit. The proposed use is located in the Starford subdivision and has direct access off of Caliber Court. The illustration to the left demonstrates the property and its surroundings. The house does have two, car, garage, and a driveway to accommodate four other vehicles. With that, parking should not be an issue for the applicant. The property is surrounded by residential properties, and based on the limited scale of this use, it appears this use would, would not have any significant impact on adjoining properties. The applicant wishes to have no more than six clients per day and requesting that the hours of operation be limited to Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and one additional Saturday per month from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The applicant has also opted to have no signs or additional employees. Should the Board of Supervisors find this use appropriate, Planning Commission would suggest the following conditions. Number one, all review agency comments and requirements shall be complied with at all times. Number two, no more than six clients per day. Number three, the applicant shall provide two parking spaces for this use. Number four, hours of operation shall be Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and one additional Saturday a month from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Number five, no signage permitted. Number six, other than those residing on the property, there should be no more, no additional employees. Number seven, any expansion or change of the use shall require a new conditional use permit. With that, I'd be happy to answer any question the board may have, and Mr. Fred Sabia is here on behalf of the application.
Questions of staff? Supervisor DeHaven?
Johnson, could you clarify the two parking spaces? Is it the intent that that would be off-street parking?
No, Mr. DeHaven, the parking spaces will be delineated on the driveway itself.
Off-street.
Off-street, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions of staff? Did the applicant wish to speak? Any questions for the applicant? Thanks, sir. We'll then conduct a public hearing to consider conditional use permit 02-13 of Fred Sabia for a cottage occupation home office. The property is located at 102 Caliber Court, Route 11396, and is identified with property identification number 54N-2-5-82 in the Stonewall Magisterial District. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this conditional use permit? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hi, my name's Jerry Stevens, and I'm a neighbor of Mr. Sabia's. And I live directly across, diagonally across the street from him, and I am not in favor of him opening this business. I express my concern for the business opening in our residential neighborhood because this is a place where people live, and clients will be in and out of there throughout the day, passing in front of my home. We live in a cul-de-sac, and where we live, there is about 16 children within the homes there, including my three children, and then he has three children as well. And most of these kids play outside after school, which will be during the hours when he has his business, and the one month of Saturdays that he has his business as well. And I'm just really concerned about the safety of my children with the number of the people that would be driving in and out of there because of the business. If Mr. Sabia has six clients a day, then that means 12 times somebody will pass in front of my house, in and out, and then my kids could be exposed to danger. If the ball rolls out to the street, people always come flying around the corner, and I'm really concerned about their safety. So if six clients a day, that means 12 times a day, there's going to be extra people in and out of there 60 times a week, 240 times a month, and that was excluding the extra Saturday. In lieu of the recent events happening in the United States, the shootings in Sandy Hook and the bombings in Boston, I'm truly concerned that a mental health business opening in a residential area is not a good idea. If this business is approved, given the location and neighborhood, because it is a good location, what, why can't other people open businesses in their homes as well? I feel that this is just going to be opening a can of worms. So in closing, I respectfully ask you not to approve this business so my neighborhood stays safe and quiet, and it's a good, good place to live. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Chairman Schickel, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Riley, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I too come here to speak in opposition to this request. My neighbor is...
Identify yourself first, please.
Pardon?
Identify yourself first.
I'm sorry. Linwood DeHaven, Starford subdivision. I live in the Portage and Stonewall District. I look out my kitchen window or my front door and see Mr. Fabia's house. I live at the very end of the cul-de-sac, out on Fortress Drive. My neighbor is, to my knowledge, an outstanding citizen, and he's certainly performing a much-needed profession at this time, especially in these days. But I think our covenant is very clear. The homes are to be single-family residence. We, on a couple occasions, I think the covenant has been broken, in my opinion. We have a group home that is some distance from my home, but to my knowledge, there's been no problem, but that's not to say there won't be tomorrow. We had a group of university students living next door to me in a rental property, and believe me, Mr. Fabia knows, I know my neighbor, Ms. Stevens knows, that was a real disaster. That has since been corrected, and to my knowledge, there's no more there. But a lot of the neighbors know about the disaster that that caused. So to me, it should be a non-issue. The covenant very clearly states that the residents are for single-family dwellings because if we allow this, it's a great economic benefit, I'm sure to Mr. Fabia, but what's to prevent, you know, a group of doctors coming in and, and doing the same thing? And, you know, we have a situation that's even worse than what Ms. Stevens has already described. Thank you for your time, and I respectfully request that you deny this request.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to respond to anything you heard?
My name is Fred Sabia, from the Stonewall District, Caliber Court. A couple of clarifications. First of all, I do mostly marriage counseling, work with a lot of middle-aged people. I used to work with more mental health cases when I worked for Timber Ridge School, but that hasn't been much of my private practice. So, for example, today I met with an elderly client and then a couple in their 60s. So it's not mental health, I mean, mental health comes into it, depression and things like that, but in 21 years of practice, I've never met with anyone dangerous. That's not my expertise. I know of four other colleagues who've had their offices in their, in their home, and I, in fact, a couple of years ago, went to a therapist for my own needs who had her practice at home. I'm not aware of any, you know, real problems that this presents as long as people drive safely, as I assume they would, the responsible citizens. It's true, I have three children. I have no concern for their well-being. This would be basically one car coming at a time. If they want me to make an adjustment, I can space the appointments out so there's one car coming, and then half hour after that appointment, another car comes so that there's not one waiting. I can do that. I think I covered it. I think I covered it.
Any questions of the applicant? Thanks, sir.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just one. Were you, were you aware of the provision in the covenants for the HOA?
Are you speaking about single occupancy? Because it, this is not where...
Prior speaker addressed that the covenants specify that the dwellings are only to be used for a private residence.
Oh, okay, no. That, I thought my asking was asking for exemption to rules like that.
Were you aware of that covenant?
I wasn't aware of, but I was aware that I couldn't just hang out a shingle and do it without asking and going through the proper...
Thanks, sir. All right, this is Stonewall.
I might, I might ask Mr. Williams if he wants to address the covenant issue.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there are really two layers of issue here. The covenants are, of course, a private agreement within the particular community that govern it. Frederick County does not have any enforcement responsibility nor any enforcement authority with regard to the covenants. All they are really is, as far as the county is concerned, is reflective of what the community involved has indicated it wants to be. The second level here is what is actually before the board, which is the zoning ordinance, which requires that if the applicant wishes to conduct this particular activity, a conditional use permit is required. So that's what is before the board.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm not insensitive to the concerns that have been expressed. Our ordinance does permit these requests for certain uses only. They basically generate little traffic, and they're, they're considered less intrusive. We cannot relieve you of your responsibility to the covenants. We don't do that. We can't do that. But, but I would remind all, both, both Ms. Stevenson and Mr. DeHaven, that this is a conditional use permit. They aren't often reconsidered, but they can be revoked, and I would be willing to move for approval, and all parties involved should know that if, if issues arise, there are alternatives to try to rectify them. I'd move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lofton.
Question from Mr. Williams. Does the approval of this CUP put him in conflict, conflict with the HOA? Are we saying that we are superseding? Is HOA a covenant?
No, two things there. A, what Mr. DeHaven stated, the county has no authority to override it. The county's approval of the CUP only enables Mr. Sabia to do what it is he seeks to do. Whether he actually seeks to do it, and when he does do it, is when the covenants are violated. So the county's action has no impact on the covenants.
So the HOA would have to take action if, in fact, they felt he was in violation of the covenants through their own process?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Fisher.
I guess there's a question in my mind here that even though there might not be a specific legal ramification, it just seems like there's a lack of consistency here, not knowing exactly what the covenant might be, and the fact that a couple of neighbors can't support this, it does trouble me considerably for the CUP. It's big question marks for me.
Any other discussion? Our hearing now, I assume, ready to vote. Supervisor Lofton, this is a motion to approve.
No.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing.
No.
Supervisor Fisher.
No.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
No.
Chairman votes no, and the conditional use permit 02-13 is denied. Board liaison reports, are there any? All right, then we'll move on to citizen comments. This is the portion of the meeting the board sets aside for citizens to address the board on any topic. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the board? Seeing no one, we will close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Board of Supervisors comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Ewing.
Move for adjournment.
No, motion for adjournment is your second. Second, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Fisher. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those no, meeting adjourned.